Good evening and welcome to the November nineteenth, two thousand and thirteenth Lawrence City Commission Meeting. Mayor Dever will not be with us this evening, sends regards, and we'll try to get through without him this evening, but I look forward to seeing him next week. First item on the agenda are proclamations, and the first is to proclaim November sixteenth through December twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteenth, as Salvation Army Christmas kettle season. We have representatives here?
Yes.
Come on up. If we could get your name and you want to tell us a little bit about the proclamation, then I'll be happy to read it when you...
Sure. My name is Lieutenant Matt McClure. I'm the Corps Officer for the Salvation Army here in Douglas County, and we're in the middle of our kettle season now, so this is just proclaiming that we're going to be ringing those bells.
Okay, well, Lieutenant McClure, I know Mayor Dever will look forward to seeing you the, I forget which night, the twenty-ninth, I think it is, when the lights come on in downtown, and we appreciate all the work that you do, so I'll read the proclamation. It's a proclamation, "Whereas the Salvation Army in Lawrence, Kansas began in eighteen-eighty-six, and whereas the Salvation Army has been providing services to the poor, lonely, and destitute of our community for over one hundred years, and whereas the Salvation Army will continue to serve and administer to the needs of our community, and whereas the Salvation Army will continue to faithfully serve the heart to God and hand to man. Now therefore, I, Mike Amix, Vice Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November sixteenth through December twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen, as Salvation Army Christmas kettle season." Lieutenant, again, thank you for all the work that Salvation Army and all the folks that Salvation Army provides, and I'll give you the proclamation. Jeremy, you have something?
This guy's a rock star. He and his wife doing great work, and had the pleasure of working with him for, how long have you been there?
About a year and a half.
Year and a half, and so I just want to use this platform to say what great work you guys are doing, and thanks for all that you're doing, looking forward to raising a lot of money this season, maybe some gold coins, some silver coins, too, and so, so great work and very happy for you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for coming. Next item on the agenda is to proclaim the month of November two thousand and thirteenth as Alzheimer's Awareness Month. We have representatives here.
Thanks, Commissioners. My name's Sarah Randolph. I'm the Associate Director of Bridge Haven Memory Care Residence and Bridge Haven Care Cottage, and we believe that memory care is best delivered in a small, loving setting with a very high staff ratio. Alzheimer's and dementia-related illnesses, there is currently no cure, and much debate on cause, so it's very important that we continue to advocate for research and a cure. In that vein, we thank you for your recognition of November as Alzheimer's Awareness Month.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll read the proclamation. It's a proclamation, "Whereas Alzheimer's is a disease that is accompanied by symptoms of memory loss called dementia. Five point four million adults in the United States suffer from Alzheimer's disease and dementia, and a few suffer in a diagnosed error. A few, a new sufferer is diagnosed every seven seconds. And whereas the dementia-related symptoms that accompany diseases such as Alzheimer's may include loss of mental function in areas such as language, memory, visual and spatial abilities, or in judgment, there is no existing cure for Alzheimer's and dementia, but promising studies focusing on lifestyle treatments are being led by researchers in our region. Bridge Haven Memory Care and Bridge Haven Care Cottage in Lawrence, Kansas focus on caring for individuals with dementia in smaller and less confusing settings. We continue to advocate for better treatments and for a cure. Whereas Bridge Haven Memory Care continues to conduct free memory screenings and to educate caregivers and sufferers about resources and raising funds for research through fundraising activities to benefit national Alzheimer's organizations. And whereas the month of November has been proclaimed as National Alzheimer's Awareness Month, a month to recognize the need for more research and assistance in dealing with the devastating effects of Alzheimer's disease and dementia. And now therefore, I, Mike Amix, Vice Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of November two thousand and thirteen as Alzheimer's Awareness Month in Lawrence, and urge all citizens to extend their support for those struggling with Alzheimer's disease and dementia and their loved ones." Sarah, thank you all very much for your work. And just a side note, I know that, you know, there's lots of folks that, you know, suffer from the disease, and I know that there's a lot of caregivers that are providing a lot of great work, and, you know, our hats go off to them because, I mean, it is a tough job, and so, anyway, any help that we can give, I know can be appreciated by a lot of organizations that's doing a lot of great work with Alzheimer's and dementia. One other thing that I wanted to bring up at this point, that's not on the agenda, I did want to make mention that we lost a very good friend in Lawrence, Kansas, this morning. Dwayne Peasley passed away this morning. He's somebody who's meant a lot to a number of us, you know, at City Hall. He's always been there to help on any cause that we see and that we can come up with, and, you know, our sympathies go out to Ruby and the kids. Again, he's been somebody that I've always looked up to, and I know many of us here have, so we appreciate all the stuff that Dwayne and his family has meant to the City of Lawrence, Kansas. So, thanks for indulging me that. One other thing, it sounds like the weather's going to turn a little bit towards the end of the week. I even heard the word dreaded snow, so I guess the presentation this evening is timely, but one of the things we might want to do, when I hear the temperatures drop before, below twenty, we might want to check on our neighbors and friends, make sure that everybody's doing okay, so let's do that, okay? Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are to be considered under one motion, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, be considered separately. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the Commission would like to have removed for further discussion? Bob?
I have a conflict with one of the licenses being issued. It is a conflict.
Okay. Okay. And was there one of, I can't remember. I guess not. Okay. Any other item that a member of the Commission would like to approve? Any member of the public have an item on the consent agenda that they would like to have pulled for separate discussion? Okay. To the consent agenda, we'll add claims to two-hundred-and-eighty-six vendors in the amount of four million, one-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents, and payroll in the amount of one million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents, with the exception of the licenses. You want the whole licenses or just the one that...
I'll just take them all off.
Okay. So with the exception of the item dealing with licenses, I would entertain a motion for approval of a consent agenda accounting claims and payroll. Have a motion made by Commissioner Shum?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farmer. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes four zero. The licenses, that is, I...
Got me, withdraw.
Sure, just step over to the side a few more. We have one cereal malt beverage license, and two, or three drinking established license. Any questions about the license?
I move approval of the licenses, as recommended by the City Clerk's office.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion made in second to approve the license made by Commissioner Farmer, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes three zero, and one abstention by Commissioner Shum. Okay. The City Manager's report.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. A few items in this week's report. It is delightful to let you all know, in case you haven't known, we've got some of us who've been out of town, that Iowa is now reopened, substantially complete. Appreciate the community's patience in regards to this important infrastructure installation. We will quickly forget the very poor shape that that road was in. It was failing. We had just even, in the past couple of years, done a resurfacing of it, and it's continuing to fail. We've now gone back in the Commission's direction, really paid attention to the base of the street, trying to make our infrastructure last longer, added a number of turn lanes, so congratulations to all those involved. Chuck, Mark, David Cronin, a long list, the inspectors that were involved. You see a memo there from Mark Teal and Jake that had worked on the project, so we're pleased that that is open, and obviously disappointed at missing the basketball game, but of course, what I really wanted to do was go and see how the intersection functioned tonight during the basketball game, so it would have been, been good to see that. A little bit of change in the trash collection schedules for the Thanksgiving holiday, you see that there. Got the monthly report on the progress in the infrastructure work out at Rock Chalk Park, and then that, to your reading, we had one of our bi-weekly progress meetings this morning, and that work proceeds. I know that Chad had an article recently about some of the work out there, and we obviously showed you photos, I think, last week in regards to the work, or two weeks Information from Plowing Development Services regarding some flood insurance program changes. Good work in the Public Works Department regarding some experiences that they had at a regional exposition regarding some of the training. Got some information in regards to the transit hub. We're going to have a public meeting here on December the second, talk about the possible relocation there on KU Endowment property at Twenty-First and Iowa. And then finally, we've got information that kind of recaps a main replacement project there on Nineteenth Street that needed attention, and that road, if you drive it, is one of our top candidates for your 2014 street maintenance program, and you'll be seeing that in the coming weeks. So while we've done the water line work, we try and coordinate this work, replace the water line underneath the street, and then resurface the street, so you'll see more information about that portion of Nineteenth Street here shortly. Be happy to respond, any questions, comments you might have.
Any questions, the City Manager? Dave, thanks for the report, very good.
I'll test out the intersection, Fifteenth and Iowa, here in about an hour or so.
You'll turn right, and I'll go straight, make sure it really works.
The hour or the...
Thanks again. Onto the regular agenda, as items come forward and we ask for public comment, I would wish that you would all kind of hold your comments to no more than four minutes. If anything needs to go longer, just ask, and I'm probably a little bit flexible. What?
I haven't turned my cell phone.
Oh, yeah, and would anybody that has a cellphone, would you please silence your cellphone as we have, you know, pretty important stuff that we're going to hear tonight? So, anyway, onto the first item. We're going to receive a presentation from Mother Earth News. Brian?
Good evening. Thanks, thank you Vice Mayor, thank you members of the Commission. I'm Brian Welch, I run Ogden Publications. We're a media company based in Topeka with about a hundred and seventy employees, forty of whom live here in Lawrence, and our flagship brand is Mother Earth News. Mother Earth News has a total readership of about five and a half million people, about two and a half million unique visitors to the website each month, and it's the, it's been the fastest-growing large magazine in North America consistently over the past decade, and so we feel very grateful and blessed for our success, which you played a part in this fall, when you hosted in Buford Watson Park, our Mother Earth News Fair. We began the fair as about four years ago with a fair in Western Pennsylvania, have now expanded, we expanded to the West Coast, we now have two on the East Coast, one on the West Coast, and finally, we launched one here in our own home state, and near our own homes, and we judged it a great success. The city's staff, and of course, the Commission, were instrumental in that by giving us use of the park and supporting our efforts. We had about ten thousand people attend the fair. They all paid between twenty-five and thirty dollars to attend. About seventy-five-hundred of those people lived more than a hundred miles from Lawrence, away from Lawrence, which we thought was a notable fact, and about forty-five-hundred of the ten thousand had never visited Lawrence, Kansas before. Came as a surprise to us. I'm sure that they'll come back now they've seen our town. We would guess that the, that those ten thousand people probably spent something like an average of two hundred dollars per person around town, and of course, the visitors from out of town would have spent somewhat more. We hope that we can find an appropriate date and an appropriate venue to hold a fall version of the Mother Earth News Fair in Lawrence again next year. We're working on a schedule and facilities for that. Basically, I'm here to say how much we appreciate the city's support, your support, and to thank you for lending it to us.
Well, Brian, I just want to say that I appreciate Mother Earth News and your organization and all the work that you personally did in bringing the fair here. I know it, I had the opportunity to visit with several people. One individual in particular from Oregon, who was somebody that was a vendor, just had the time of his life, I think, in downtown, and just all the compliments in the world. So, you know, anytime that, you know, obviously, we get an organization like Mother Earth News and have the opportunity to really show off town, I mean, it was, it was really a big weekend for all of us, so we appreciate your help there. I'm sure that we can be pretty accommodating to help with that location for next year, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I would imagine that that can work. Bob, you have something?
Yeah, I went to the fair on both days, both Saturday and Sunday, and everything you said is true. I saw far more people that I didn't recognize than I did, and so I'm presuming those people are from out and around, as you indicate by your, by your information. So, it was a very unique happening. I mean, it was truly different, including the saddle goats that were there.
Yes.
Very unusual. And the other, you know, the other events and demonstrations, the log, log mill, the adobe, not called adobe, but the brick making or the...
Right, cob.
What's it called?
The cob building.
Cob building, yes, okay.
Yeah, basically a sophisticated method of smearing mud in very large piles and turning it into a home. Pretty neat.
Right, and there were a lot of participants, and then the yurts were interesting, too, and we've had discussions with that, and that's not an animal, that's a yak. A yurt is around home from the, from the Himalayas, like, anyway, and a gentleman from Colorado wanted to know if I wanted to buy the yurt. It was late on Sunday afternoon because he didn't want to cart it back to Colorado, and my wife declined for me, because we were standing there.
If she had not been there, would you have made an offer, Commissioner? Because I can still line that up for you.
Yeah, I don't. I think I'd rather have a yak.
Very well.
No, it was a great deal, and then from, because I'm integrated in the downtown scene, I know a lot of the merchants and a lot of the hospitality industry had a great weekend, based on the number of people that were there, the number of overnight stays, and the fact that it was a real interesting crowd, so it was, it was good all the way around, and good weather, too, you got, so.
Very nice, perfect weather.
It was nice.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Questions?
Okay. Brian was nice enough to bring a number of magazines down, so...
By the way, I signed up for Mother Earth News there also.
I'm very glad to hear it. I hope the other Commissioners would entertain an offer of a discounted rate if they'd like to subscribe as well. Mike gets his at a steeply discounted rate.
My barber shop is covered with them. But, no, anyway, Brian, we appreciate all, all that you do for our communities, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You bet, thanks for coming.
Good night.
Okay. Next item. I'm sorry? Oh, is there any public comment? Brian, wait a minute, hold on. Is there any public comment on that item? I'm sorry. You'd think I was new to this. Okay, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Bob. Next item, consider authorizing the City Manager enter into a license agreement with Presto Convenience Stores, L L C, to allow for the installation and maintenance of groundwater collection equipment within the right-of-way, the eight-hundred block of Ohio Street. This item was deferred from a couple of weeks ago. Give additional time for any other information. Mark?
Good evening, Commissioners. Mark Teal, Public Works Department. Tonight before you, you have an item to consider approving the license agreement to allow contractor to install a underground collection system for contaminated materials. Wanted, wanted to give you just a brief overview. I know in the packet that you have, there's quite a bit of information. There's a detailed report from the consultant that is working with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and there's also attached was a detailed plan sheets that include all the work that will be done, but just briefly, wanted to cover some of the highlights that got us to where we are today. In two thousand and six, there was an leak discovered that resulted in a fire at a property near that location. Subsequently, underground monitoring systems and collection systems were installed at that time through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, along with the contractor. Also, the owner of the property was involved at that time. In two thousand and thirteen, through their monitoring system and monitoring well twenty-one, and I've got a map I would like to show of that. Oh, sorry, wrong map. Let's try that one. They're outlined with the red balloon, just kind of a reference point for you. Ninth Street's down here, Ohio Street, the original monitoring system that was installed in two thousand and six is approximately in this area right here, and there is a building right in here that's, was erected, that has the pumps and collection, other collection equipment as well. In that monitoring well, they discovered additional contamination of gasoline that was outside of the collection trench area, and at that point, decision was made by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and with the consultant, that additional collection equipment needed to be installed to continue to collect ground contamination. This map that I showed earlier basically shows the extent, or the extension of what was already in place. The black line here, I apologize for the scale here, it's hard to see. The black dotted line shows what is actually in, currently in the ground. This area here is that monitoring house that has some pumps and other, other things there. Basically, this project will extend that with piping, and that's identified in the blue. The red line indicates the buried collection trench. The two manholes that will be installed, one there and one here at the intersection, are thirty-six inch diameter manholes. If you've seen a typical installation of sanitary sewer or storm sewer manhole in the street, that's what, what you'll see on the surface. And then there's cleanouts, there's three cleanouts that will be installed with this construction as well, located here, here, and here. Those are six-to-eight inch cleanouts. On the surface, they'll look like a typical water meter valve that you see in the pavement. So on the, after the construction's completed, basically, it'll be a minimal intrusion into the street system. Also, I'd like to mention that Public Works Department has met numerous times with KDHE and with SCS Aquaterra, the consultant that is designing this work. We've had numerous meetings in terms of what the expectation is to meet city specifications for installation, but also for the restoration of the road surfaces and the properties once this work is completed. And so, two colleagues tonight from KDHE are here, as well as the consultant from SCS Aquaterra, along with myself, would be glad to expand any of this information or answer any additional questions that you all may have. The action tonight before you is to authorize the City Manager to enter into a license agreement.
Questions, Mark? Who pays?
Good question. Not the city. This is paid for from a trust fund, KDHE Petroleum Storage Tank Release Trust Fund.
And Mark, the, once the manholes are put in and the lines are put in, everything's going to be restored back to the condition it is right now, is that correct?
Yes, sir, or better.
Or better, okay. And we're going to reclaim the bricks that are in the ground and use them...
Yes, absolutely.
Wherever, okay? Do you have a question?
That was my question.
Okay. Well, I think that that was the question that we had before from the individual who had sent us an email. Have we had discussions with the property owners along there that kind of know what's going to happen?
Yes, Vice Mayor, that's my understanding. Also, there's agreements in place with the existing property owners where these items will be placed on private property.
Okay. Terry, did you have anything? Okay. Any comments from the consultants or anybody, or any questions from any of those?
Anything to add from this?
Okay, thanks for coming this evening. Okay, thanks, Mark. Is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay. Any other questions with Mark? Well, it seems to me that we got the, you know, the questions that we wanted to get answered, and that was the, you know, what it was going to look like and the condition of everything, and how it was to be replaced once the construction was done, and I'm glad we got that. Bob, thanks for your question about payment, that's always a big one. So, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion to authorize the City Manager to enter into a license agreement with Presto Convenience Stores, L L C.
So done.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval made by Commissioner Reardon, second by Commissioner Farmer. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes four zero. Mark, thank you very much, thanks, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is to consider accepting a donation of property for the creation of the Sandra J Shaw Community Health Park and the Outside for a Better Inside Trail. Representatives here this evening? Hi, David.
David Johnson, Burton Ash CEO. You know, I can't say enough about the partnerships we've got with the city. Just last week, the Lawrence Police Officers and Burton Ash staff worked together on a very difficult and complicated case, and as a consequence, a Lawrence resident is alive this week who would not have been. I think that this park can symbolize for the community the many important partnerships we really have with the city. We purchased this property from the proceeds of a life insurance policy that the Board of Directors had bought years and years ago on Sandy's life, and certainly, I would rather, if she was here, she'd make us name it something else, but I wish she was here to see this collaboration and linking of a, really, a community treasure and people's health. So John and I are really here to answer any questions you might have about this project. The remainder of the property, we intend to use as a wellness campus, really in partnership with, for one, Heartland Community Health, and link mental health and, and primary healthcare for the citizens of the community, so. It's a great, it's a great project, thanks to Dave Corliss, Ernie Shaw, and Mark Hecker, and other city staff people, as well as Outside for a Better Insight, Trainer Architects, Pinkney Neighborhood, a lot of people have come together to work on this thing.
Questions to Dave?
Dave, thank you. You know, the work that you and everybody involved...
You know, the work that you and everybody involved with Burton Ash really hit home a week or so ago when you had the meeting at Misselli's and, you know, the video that was put on. I mean, that I mean, that hit, that hit hard. So I appreciate the invitation to be able to come to the breakfast and be a part of that.
Thank you for coming.
Anyway. Appreciate all the work that, you know, that you've done here and John McGrew and Outside for a Better Inside. As John and I was talking, it seemed like it was a long time ago that we talked about this and may have been a couple of days, but not very long ago. But then again, we were talking about when John was a kid and I was a kid, I remember kind of fishing down there and I think I don't think I ever paid that quarter that you were supposed to pay, but that's a whole nother story. So anyway.
Yeah, we'll take it. We'll take it.
The testimony. Come to get the quarters. There you go. Well, anyway, appreciate all the work. Dave, you did have a comment.
No, I was just going to introduce it. I think David did a good job as well. I think this commission appreciates the fact that we don't get donations very often, and we don't get partnerships like this very often as well. So I think David did here in a minute, John amplify on that. But we're excited about this opportunity. This is a first initial step there. So as we get to that point of the discussion. I was going to introduce, but that was all good. So we're really excited about this.
Bob, you have a question?
Yeah, I have one question. I don't know if this is for you or John or our staff. I've been working quite a bit with trail projects. The idea, the ultimate goal is to have a ring go around the city of a multi-use path. You're in the vicinity of some connecting areas that might work out very nicely. So is the trail you're contemplating here built to the standard of multi-use path? And then can that, I have no idea how this all plays out, but the question is I'm looking at where it loops around the back of the lake. If there were a way to take that and continue the trail on, would that be appropriate? I mean, would you not find that acceptable?
It's a topography challenge and certainly not something that could be ADA compliant to continue. So sort of the thought about that configuration that you see right now is what could we do that would continue to make the trail ADA compliant? We're, we've laid out all our specifications with City Park and Rec to make sure that it's a trail that connects. And in fact, we believe that the initial sunflower grant and private funds will allow us to extend into Bertrand Park and get a start on the, you know, continuing that trap, path down the river.
I was thinking of the other direction. You're talking about going back to the north and east then. I'm talking about going to the west or north and west. If there was a place along this new trail that could intersect and continue to carry it west, would there be any objection to that?
We wouldn't have any objection to it, no.
And you are contemplating the trail being built to a multi-use path of 10 feet wide or?
What are we, what are we doing, Ernie? Is that it?
Okay, perfect. I'm all for it.
Okay. Any other questions, Dave? Dave, thank you. John, did you have anything that you want to add?
Well, do you want me to tell you about more of the history? Is that what you'd like?
As long as it's not stories about me.
I wanted to address your comment. We talked about that. We walked the area with Elizabeth Stewart with the Sunflower Foundation. And yeah, it just really wouldn't work unless you bridge that one steep drop-off. But there's no reason why there still couldn't be a trail there. It just couldn't be a handicap accessible trail at this point without bridging it in some way. But yes, I'm hopeful that where Woody Park is, you know, right north of the hospital, that we'll be able in time to bring down the old right-of-way of Main Street that goes down, you've probably been back there, most people haven't, where the old Beer Garden was. It's really, there's a lot of history there and I just think we should continue the trail in some fashion onto the west and then be able to take it all the way over along Peterson Road and out to the Rock Chalk Park. I hope we'll be able to do that. You know, it's just, it's such a beautiful historic place. You know, that's where they mined the clay for the streets in Lawrence and and not many people know that. Not many people even know that it's there. But when we build this trail, they will. And it'll, it'll be a nice little jewel to add to your park and trail system, I think. We thank you for the consideration.
Thanks, John. Thanks for all your hard work.
Dave, do you want to give us a little bit of background on how the program works? I know there's an application for
Correct. The, through a lot of efforts, there's a grant application that's being forwarded and the match is coming from some donated funds that John and others are working to obtain so that the plan is, is that there would not be any city cost in the construction of the trail at this site. Then eventually, what would occur is once that, once that happens, and we'll be happy to help with any of the administrative duties as far as contracting or whatever it would be appropriate to occur there. Then once that happens, then that land would then transfer to the to the city and be part of our park system. And you see the request here that is part of the offer to call the park, the Sandra J. Shaw Community Health Park, and then to call the trail, the Outside for the Better Inside Trail. We would then maintain that property. There will probably also be a need over time as we have funds to put in additional amenities at this location. Parking lot and a few other things. As Commissioner Shum has indicated, we're trying to look at a master plan for a lot of trail connections in this area. And we would look at this property to see how that can fit into that, knowing that this has already been approved and wanting to see how all those different types of connections can occur. So that's, that's the general next steps that I would see. Ernie is here and can embellish or correct as appropriate.
Ernie, did you have any more to add?
Okay.
No, not really. As Dave said, this is something we've been working on for a long time as far as the complete loop around the city and making a, not just an exercise path, but a way to get from point A to point B, you know? And that's the ultimate goal. And going west from this trail would be another thing. Out of Rock Chalk Park where we're making those trails, that's another thing. We've got a grant in right now trying to connect over to Queen's Road. So that's another step. So it's little pieces at a time and eventually we'll have that complete connection all the way around the city and actually have a sustainable transportation mode other than for a car to get to places. So that's the ultimate goal.
That sidewalk that's on the Main Street side, what, you have any idea what the width of that sidewalk is? And is that just a sidewalk? That's not a path?
Just a sidewalk. It's on the Main Street now, existing?
It looks like it dead ends
Yeah, it does.
There on the side of the park?
I think it's just probably a six-foot sidewalk.
Okay. I didn't know if that might be able to be used for parking at all. So anyway. We'd have to check the topography. Okay. Thank you. Public comment? Any public comment on this item? Hi, KT.
Hi. Good evening, Commissioners. My name's KT Walsh. I was close to Sandy Shaw and I'm close to her husband, Doug Witt. And I wanted to say thank you for honoring Sandra. She was an amazing woman. And Doug couldn't be here tonight, but their whole wonderful extended family is so pleased about this honor for Sandy. It's a beautiful site. I go there often with my dog. There's a lot of people who take their dogs down there. It's a de facto park already, as you that fish there know. I'm so glad. I heard through planning that they're going to keep the log cabin and I think that's a wonderful piece of history for the VFW. So let's see. I'm also really happy to hear that perhaps there would be a trail connecting with our other trails in the city because we all have a dream of a complete trail network. I do know that to make things handicap accessible, I have friends in Albuquerque who are veterans who use wheelchairs. And the Veterans Administration has some money for bridging areas to make outdoor spaces accessible. So that might be something to look into. And then thank you to Mr. McGrew and Bert Nash, everyone who's been working on this and the gift. And also, it's wonderful that we will be fighting the silly idea that mental health is separate from physical health. That's absurd. And so I'm glad this is happening. Thank you.
Thank you, KT. Other public comment?
Yeah, hi. I'm Linda Bush, 235 Illinois Street, and I'm with the Pinney Neighborhood Association and thank Vice Mayor and Commissioners for hearing this proposal tonight. And the Pinney Neighborhood Association just wanted to reaffirm our support of the creation and development of the Sandra Shaw Community Health Park and the Inside for a Better Outside Trail. And we're fiercely protective of our green space in our neighborhood area, and we're really excited about this project. So appreciate your consideration of it.
Thank you. Other comment? Okay. Back to the commission? Any comments or questions?
No, not for me. I think this is a great project and I like the fact that it's going to be a piece of the puzzle.
I mean, this is, what I think Haseman said that I want to make sure that we say is that we're, you know, Dave talked about the partnership that we have, but we're going to need to do more in order to make this what it's really intended to be, and that is, that is a place of whole wellness for the community. And so so I hope that as we approve this, we're doing it with in mind the idea that in the future, we're going to have to kick in some more resources to really make this and be committed to making this a wellness facility. Not only for those that struggle with mental health issues in our community, but also those that struggle with physical health and hunger and those sorts of things. Terry is right. This is a piece of the puzzle and we're going to have to continue to make connections and provide resources to to make this an even stronger piece of the puzzle in our community.
Bob, you have anything?
You tell from my room or comments, I'm very much in favor of this and it's has multiple potentials for the community and for sure the the connecting connectivity of the existing trails we have. But this is going to be a nice natural site. It's a little lake. I think it's really a nice, nice sweet deal. So it's like the things we want to be doing.
I agree with all of those comments. And one other thing, and KT, I appreciate your comments about Sandra Shaw. You know, it's one of those parts of this job that those of us who've been here for a while have the opportunity to work with Sandy and a lot of the things from Burton Ash. And so it's, it's a real privilege, you know, to be able to be part of obviously accepting the donation from Burton Ash and Outside for a Better Inside, you know, trail system. John, I appreciate all the work that you've done and Dave, all the stuff that you've done. But but it's really, it really is a privilege to be able to sit here and have just a small part of being able to make Sandy's name just on that for a long time and remember what it meant to a lot of us. So with that, Dave Corliss asked you, talks about direct staff as appropriate. Tonight's action is to approve and accept the donation and also to do the naming. Is that correct? Or is that already?
I believe that is appropriate at this time. We will probably enter into some type of letter agreement. Just we're accepting this. We're acknowledging all of that. It is going to occur. I'm not sure exactly about the timing. I don't think that they are either because it'll depend upon the grant and the donations to match the grant and then finalize and design and then construction. But I think if you authorize us to accept this donation and then direct us to prepare any other necessary documents according to the letters that have been presented, I think that's sufficient.
Okay, I would entertain that motion for approval and also the the naming of Sandra J. Shaw Community Health Park and also Outside for a Better Inside Trail. Thank you all very much for your hard work on, what a, what a great deal. I mean, it's really a great deal.
I'd make a motion to direct the city manager to accept the donation of the property and prepare the the necessary documentation for the completion of that act as well as the naming of the park, the Sandra J. Shaw Community Health Park, as well as naming the trail, the Outside for a Better Inside Trail.
Your second?
Second.
Motion made in second for the acceptance in the other direction of staff. Made by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda are some Traffic Safety Commission items. The first item is to consider Traffic Safety Commission recommendation to deny the request for traffic calming at Montana Street and Park Hill Terrace. This item came before us with a seven-to-one recommendation for denial. David?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. At the October Traffic Safety Commission meeting, they heard this request. Traffic data collected September 17th and 18th found about 160 vehicles in a 24-hour period using this connection with an 85th percentile speed of just over 31 miles an hour. Based upon that data, it does not meet the city's criteria for consideration of traffic calming. There were two residents from the area that spoke in favor of the request, and they also received an email from an additional resident supporting that. But the Traffic Safety Commission did vote seven-to-one recommending denial of that request. And with that, I'll respond to any questions you might have.
Questions, Dave? Did I read in the minutes, this is the item that the one vote against was to make sure that it got to?
We wanted to make sure that you all got to discuss it.
Okay. Okay. No questions. Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thanks.
Public comment? Any public comment on this item? Back to the commission?
I mean, I think, you know, I think Mr. Ziegler Meyer's comments about how low the traffic counts were at this location is one that you have to look at for, you know, the reasons of Traffic Safety Commission took the action that they did. Ms. Bowen's email to all of us, you know, about you know, the traffic, you know, problems that exist in Park Hill. I mean, they make a lot of sense. I don't know if we're ready to, you know, start a new endeavor on how we deal with these, but you know, I know that there's a lot of cut-through traffic that goes through, you know, that entire neighborhood, but
I think the gist of Ms. Bowen's email was that we ought to take a comprehensive view of the area to see, to look at it in concert to see if there, what should or should not be done. I kind of agree with that. If indeed there's multiple areas of, there are problems, we ought to be looking at the area and not just piecemeal one at a time so that we can kind of look to see what we need to do.
Commissioner Reardon, it basically asked us to look, that in response to that. I think we can, we can look at that a bit more comprehensive. We meet with Carol. It's it's probably an area maybe a little bit in transition with some of the traffic, particularly with some of the changes that are going to be happening to the south. So it's probably worthy of some additional review. So I think we can we can look at that. And I think it's also good for the commission and other citizens and those that are interested in that particular neighborhood to understand our transportation framework as well. So we'll do that.
You know, one of the things, if we're going to do that, Dave, is that we had a request before us. It's been several years ago, about 27th Street west of, I think, you know, the Naismith Park through there about adding traffic calming or some other type of devices there. You know, bring up the idea of changing traffic, you know, at the south end of Louisiana Street. You know, it may be, we may be having effects, you know, on 27th Street also similar to what's happening in Ms. Bowen's neighborhood there also. So we might want to look at that area also if we're going to be doing that.
And just so that we all understand that the creeping scope of looking at it, we are looking at a number of items and this would be, I think we would include that we're about ready to have a fairly about ready to have a fairly large change, at least for this community, in traffic patterns with the installation of the South Lawrence Traffic Way, Bob Billings Parkway, interchange, 31st Street connecting between Haskell and O'Connell. There could be a number of items that we're going to need to analyze, and we want to, we want to keep David in the room here, so we're going to want to pace ourselves on some of those items, particularly as we get ready for those new installations. But I think that it's good to look at this area and particularly our existing neighborhoods first.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, you know, I would suggest on this item that we go ahead and concur with the Traffic Safety Commission with a caveat that we can bring it back up at later date, you know, if appropriate, you know, at this location, to be considered by either this body or Traffic Safety Commission or whoever we want to see. So I would entertain a motion to concur with Traffic Safety Commission's recommendation for denial of, for traffic calming at Montana and Park Hill Terrace.
So moved.
Motion made in second to concur for traffic safety for denial, made by Commissioner Farmer, seconded by Commissioner Shum. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Next item is to consider the Traffic Safety Commission's recommendation to establish no parking along the east side of Jana Drive from 50 feet north of Roger's Place to 50 feet south of Roger's Place, and consider adopting on First Reading Ordinance Number 8941, establishing the no parking.
Again, at the October Traffic Safety Commission meeting, this item was heard. There were three residents that spoke in favor of the request and an additional email that supported that also. The concern is, as you are coming down Roger's Place, which I'm told is one of the steepest hills in town, if not the steepest, even if you have a four-wheel drive vehicle, when you get to the bottom and as slow as you can possibly go when you're trying to turn onto Jana, since it is a T-intersection, that many times you slide across the street and sometimes bump up against the curb or into the driveways on the other side. And with vehicles parked close to those driveways and close to that intersection, you never know where you might bounce next. There's no record of any crashes that we are aware of, but the people that live there and have experienced indicate a number of near misses, and they just like to make sure that there aren't any hits in the future. Any questions that I can respond to?
Roger's Place is steep. There's a house, I was telling in an agenda meeting yesterday, the house that my wife, you know, really kind of liked up at the south end of the street there to buy, and I thought, yeah, that'd be good, but I'd have to have a new truck and have a way to get home, or that I'd have to park on Harvard and walk through the backyard to get home, because I, I just know I couldn't go down that hill and even think of stopping. I'm surprised there's no information on wrecks down at the bottom of that hill in the winter time, but oh, well. Anyway, any questions, Dave? I mean, I think it's a good recommendation.
The whole issue is just during snowstorms or ice?
That was the reason for the court request, yes.
Is there any, is there any way to establish a temporary no parking sign? No parking designated when certain kinds of weather is in place, or is that impossible to enforce?
I'm not sure that it'd be impossible to enforce. It'd be difficult to describe what all those conditions might be and put them on a sign so that the motorists can understand it all.
Well, first of all, of course, anybody who, if they read a sign like that would say, gosh, I really don't want to park my car, or it might get bashed in. Most people would say that, I think. But anyway, that's, it'd be a shame to lose all that parking just for the half dozen times a year that it's inclement and might cause a situation, unless there's other things other than just ice and snow.
I would think a little bit, Commissioner, just because how steep this roadway is, if it's a little bit damp, I think, you know, cars are going to go through it. Something as light as my pickup's probably going to go. If we end up with sand on that street, I mean, there's going to be times when you're going to slide through it, it's just not going to stop. So I think, I think that there's other times other than just the ice and snow, but.
Okay, then why did the, why did the Traffic Safety deny it?
They recommended approval.
Yeah, they recommend.
Oh, they recommended approval.
Yeah, we're going to.
All right.
The amount of parking that will be removed is limited, though, because on that east side, there's a couple of large driveways, one into a house and then another one into a condo complex. So the number of actual spaces that are being eliminated is limited.
Any other questions, the staff? Okay, thanks, Dave. Other comment?
Good evening, my name's Rhonda Roy. I live at 1028 Roger's Place, which is at the very top of the hill. We've lived there for 12 years now. I know that at the last meeting, the Traffic Commission meeting, they discussed concern about the parking for those townhouses being affected, and there are actually 18 double garages there plus four single garages. There's room for 40 cars behind the houses or townhouses or condos, I don't know what they're technically called. The other, so there's, there's not really a lot of concern, in my opinion, for they're not having enough parking for those people that live there, especially if there's only supposed to be three non-named people or whatever it's called. The other thing that I heard you mention is that there are two large driveways down at the bottom of the hill. There's one single car driveway, there's a fire hydrant right next to that driveway, and then there's the big driveway, which goes into the condominiums. And all we're asking for are three parking spots, two on the north side and one on the south side. So in my opinion, three parking spots is very little, considering we risk our lives, not only during the snow and the ice, but also during the rain, like Mr. Amick had mentioned. You know, there's oil that are on the streets, and a lot of our people that come looking at those houses don't want to live there because it's bad. I mean, it's not safe, but yet it's a beautiful neighborhood. The fire emergent, the fire trucks, I've spoken to the fire department that does our neighborhood, and what the captain told me, and I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, had shared with me is that it's difficult, if not impossible, if there are cars parked on either side of Jana Drive, to come up our hill, because there's no room for that truck to turn. And that would be coming from the north. The south isn't quite so bad, because there is a fire hydrant there that's no parking, supposedly. Frequently, there is parking there, because I'm the neighborhood person that calls routinely and turns people in. And my concern for you all or whoever decides to put up a temporary seasonal no parking, we have college kids that live on Jana Drive, they're not homeowners, they're college kids. They don't live there except for their contract, if they stay for the entire contract, the lease. They're not going to obey the sign, they don't obey no parking at fire hydrants, why would they obey that? So that's my concern, and I appreciate your all's consideration.
Okay, thanks, Rhonda. Other comment?
I'm Jeanie Pease, and I'm president of the Sunset Hill Neighborhood Association. And Roger's Place is in our neighborhood, and I'm here just to give support to the request of the neighbors on Roger's Place. And I've looked at the situation, and I too live on a hill, so I understand their problem, and it is a safety issue. And I think Rhonda's done a great job in addressing all of the questions that were brought up at the Traffic Commission meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeanie. Other comment? Any other comment? Okay, back to the Commission. Any other questions, the staff? None?
Living on Tennessee Street and having some significant grades there, ice and snow are very difficult. Also, living with college students can be very difficult at times, too, and I would agree. I think Bob's concept is a good concept in theory, but in reality, if you make it a seasonal, it just doesn't work. And I think there's some good things about it, but, so I think this type of situation, especially with safety and how steep that is, and right near where I live, how steep it is, that this makes a lot of sense to me.
Well, Bob, I appreciate you bringing up, you know, the, anytime we lose parking, I mean, you know, we talk about, you know, losing parking places all the time. Seems like we've had record discussions about trying to come up with more parking spaces. So I appreciate you bringing it up. In this particular case, I just think, as Terry just mentioned, you know, the steepness of this hill and going up and down that thing, you know, several times, I know I couldn't do it. I would be clear, not everybody.
You've got to convince me, as well as the speakers and the audience, so let me be the first.
I'd entertain a motion to.
Let me be the first to move. Approval on First Reading, Order December 8, 9, 41, to concur with the Traffic and Safety Commission.
Thanks.
Let the minutes state that, please.
Let the minutes, yeah. Put them in bold print. A motion to adopt, adopt on First Reading Ordinance Number 8941, made by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes four zero. Thank you all very much for coming. Next item on the agenda is to receive a presentation of the 2013-2014 Snow Operation and Preparations. It's going to be like two years ago, two inches of snow, that's it. Trucks will stay in the barn this year.
It's a guarantee?
Sure.
Okay, see you. Good evening, Mark. Good evening. Commissioners Mark Teal again with the Public Works Department. It's, I'll be brief, because the KU score is close. I get, I really enjoy coming up.
That's not a good way to start.
That's right, that's right. Every November, I enjoy getting in front of the Commissioners and the public and letting them know how prepared we are, what we expect from our employees, what we expect from the community, and what they should expect from us for snow operations. But also, back up just a minute, I'd like to, before I get started, we've got a new operations manager this year. Tom Warzelak retired this year, and I believe you've all have met, had an opportunity to meet Mike Perkins, he's here tonight.
Hi, Mike.
We're in, we're in good hands. Mike has many, many years of operational experience with street maintenance as well as snow operations, so we, I feel, and I think Public Works feels like we're in good hands with Mike on board now. Just kind of, it's some repetitive information, but I think it's important to know what we expect. These are some of the numbers that we use for planning every year. Lawrence usually sees around 21 inches of snow, about seven events, and we pretty much expect snow from December to March, although this year, even though Lawrence didn't experience any snow, there had, the snow has fallen twice in the state of Kansas, mostly out west. Did get as far west of us as Salina, though. We have a, I'll mention this a little later, too, but we contract with a weather providing, a private weather service helps us to better predict exactly what's going to happen here in the community, even to the point of we'll know from east Lawrence to west Lawrence, from south to north. And some of the things that they help us with future planning is they provide some numbers for us, and you can see here with this slide, shows kind of the history and where we are in the Midwest. Depends each year where the jet stream comes down, how far it comes down. And you can see from any year, you can have no snow and we can have a lot of snow. So it's hard to plan, so we try to plan on those average numbers. Here's what last year looked like compared to some of the other years in terms of records. February, which is usually a predictable snowy month for us, was the third snowiest in the history of tracking snow events in Lawrence. That was, that was related to two events over about seven days. Comparison numberwise for your cost, you can see when we have relatively no snow here, we spent about $95,000 in 11 and 12, and almost a half, or a little more than a half a million dollars last year. One of the questions that we get asked a lot from the public is, what do we do with the money when we don't spend it on snow removal? Well, we really don't have a snow removal budget per se. We do budget for salt and sand, but that's not the whole operational cost. We have equipment and manpower and contracted labor and those types of things. Basically, what we don't spend on snow removal, we spend on maintaining our streets. So less expensive snow operation years are better for us in terms of street maintenance. Our plan is basically, we divide the city into five areas. We use Iowa and Bob Billings Parkway kind of as a dividing. There are 17 specific routes, that's based on our operational equipment that we have available to us. And we basically prioritize from most traveled to least traveled, meaning collectors, arterials down to residential streets. We do have specific areas that we focus in on, based on traffic counts, bus routes, major centers of employment and so forth. We do begin plowing at one inch of snow, and treatment begins prior to the event, something that we added two years ago. This will be the, actually be our third year with doing pre-treatment. Pre-treatment was a huge addition to our operational readiness here. Basically, it does a number of things for us. First of all, it lowers the actual cost to deal with any event that we have, and it helps us get those events done faster. When we can pre-treat, we can do that during normal operational hours, where we're not paying overtime to employees, and where it helps us get to the, get the situation resolved faster, because it basically creates a bond breaker between the pavement and the ice or the snow, so that as we're plowing and vehicles are traveling over the road surfaces and they pack that snow down, there's that continual melt from underneath. And in the past, when we didn't pre-treat, we're basically treating and plowing from the top down. Now we're working from both, both directions, from the bottom and from the top. The one thing that hurts us in this region is rain. If we have a prediction like we do for Friday of rain that's going to precede the snow, typically, we can't pre-treat, because the rain just basically washes the salt solution off of the roads. The other factor that isn't as big, isn't as critical for us, but it's the temperature. Typically, when the temperatures drop below 15 degrees, pre-treating isn't an option either. Fortunately, we don't experience that here in northeast Kansas that often. These are our pre-treating routes, our primary route. We have the capability of pre-treating all 835 lane miles of roadway in the city system. We don't always do that. Mike and I meet, we meet with the supervisors, we talk with our weather partners. Before any event, we've already been having those conversations based on the forecast for Friday night, or for, excuse me, overnight Thursday into Friday morning. And so we start planning early, we know what we think we're going to have happen, and we make those determinations at that point, how much of the community we will pre-treat, and what type of crew operational readiness we need to have available. Our sanding and salting routes pretty much follow our arterials. We do go into residential areas, but only after we have maintained and have adequate protection to our arterials and collectors. Plowing routes, broken out, we have 200 of the 835 miles or so, you can see 201 lane miles, priority ones, and about 150 lane miles, priority twos. That's how we go about our business of plowing the streets. Once we have established our minimum level of service that we expect, that the community expects from us, then we begin to navigate into residential areas. That's another point where the pre-treatment is huge for us. If we go into pre-treat residential areas, it gives us a huge advantage. Here's our operational readiness for materials. We have plenty of materials on hand. In an average year, we usually exhaust about 3,000 tons of salt. We have more than that on hand right now. We also have the ability to have delivered about 2,500 tons of salt. We also have. We also have, they're not written agreements, but we have throughout northeast Kansas our other municipality partners where we can share resources if we need to. Equipment, we're well equipped. You all have done a good job along with the city manager, ensuring that we have the resources that we need to take care of the events as they come down. Personnel, we also are well equipped with operators. We have a very diverse staff from new employees that have never plowed snow to seasoned veterans that have been doing this for twenty, twenty-five years. We work on the buddy system, so every, every operator is teamed with another operator from a day shift to a night shift type of a concept. And they, we usually try to pair senior experienced operators with less experienced operators so they can understand better what's happening. We also have plenty of support for those folks that are out there actually doing the operational plowing. Other departments have helped us in the past, Parks Interact, Utilities, Police and Fire. And we also have the resources available to us to call on our local contractors in the area when we need their help. Public awareness, I say this over and over again when I talk to our media partners, they are one of our strongest allies in helping us to do our job. They get the word out to the community. I think the better job that we do in terms of community awareness of what it is we need to do, what we need them to do for us, what's gonna happen so that they can be prepared. I don't like getting the phone calls from the public that say, we didn't know what was going on. So we try our hardest to make sure that that information is out there. When to expect it, is it gonna affect your morning commute? Is it gonna affect you picking up your kids from school in the afternoon and all sorts of things? We do a lot of practicing. Recently, Megan Gilan, our Public Information Officer, worked with us to do an in-focus video. You all are familiar with those other areas of the city. I think that's gonna be a huge piece. You know, people will, parts of the community, they really like getting out there on that social media and the YouTube stuff. So I think that's gonna be popular for us this year. We are also this year sending out a flyer, for lack of a better term, that will be in the water bills for all the residents. And hopefully, they'll take that out of their water bill and put it up on the refrigerator with a magnet. It's got our website, our phone numbers, all the information they'll need to, if they need to contact us to find out what's going on. So what can the public do to help us? Best thing that the public can do is be prepared, know what's, know what to expect. It's not always possible for them to stay at home. A lot of people have to go to work, their kids have to get to school. But being prepared and knowing how to drive in the snow, knowing what to expect, what our operational capabilities are, is huge for us. We, we have an area, and I'll show you a map here in a second. We've identified through interaction and debriefings with our snow operators which parts of town become hazardous when there's cars parked on the streets for our operators, either due to narrow, the narrowness of the street or the recent item that you just approved for no parking such as Jana Drive. Those types of areas, we ask the public not to park their vehicles there. The other thing that we do as part of the community, there's an expectation that the residents maintain their sidewalks for a number of reasons. It's helpful for us if they wait, if they can wait to do that until after we've plowed their street, because inevitably what happens is they get right out on top of the snow, they shovel their driveway, they shovel their sidewalks, and then our plow comes by and puts a big winrow in front of their driveway. We try to minimize that as much as we can, but it's just an unfortunate part of the process, and it's just not practical for us to go out and clear out every driveway that we push snow in front of. So I, I look at it kind of as a partnering thing. It's not us against, you know, we don't do it intentionally, but if, if there's a possibility of waiting, it would be better for the community to do that. Then the fun stuff that we do, every year, the first Tuesday in November of each year, we do an annual snow training day. This year, we expanded that to actually two days. And, and it's a simple process. The first part of the, the training, the operators get all the equipment out, they put the spreaders on the truck, they put the plows on the truck, they turn the switches on, they make sure everything's working, make a long laundry list of the things that, you know, after sitting all summer idle, things that need to be fixed, and then they go about getting those repaired. If we can't repair them at our shop, we send them to our fleet division, and they take care of that. Then in the afternoon, the two operators I mentioned earlier on the buddy system, they literally get in the plow and they drive around the city on their assigned routes, and they try to do a couple of things. One is they try to become familiar with the route. They look for things like manholes that stick, are sticking up above the ground. They look for mailboxes, they look for cars, they look for basketball goals, because all these things are gonna be there when it's snowing. The difference is you can't always see them when it's snowing, so they try to make themselves as familiar. If they, if they identify something that's an issue or concern for them, they report that back, and we try to address that with as best we can. Earlier, the city manager mentioned in, in his report that our operators, for the first time, competed in the American Public Works Association Equipment Expo. It used to be called the Snow Rodeo, but it encompasses so many more types of pieces of equipment that they've changed the name. I like the Snow Rodeo part of it. Our operators had fun out there. It's very competitive, it's a very complex course that they have to navigate, especially with the snow plow. And they're basically the cones, and they have things they've gotta not hit and keep from doing. They score points. They also take an actual written test on snow operation knowledge, and they rate them. Our operators actually did very well. I was really impressed the day I went out. It's in Gardner, Kansas. I showed up. All the other communities from northeast Kansas have trucks there, and the one truck that was there that actually had a snowplow blade that was painted advertising the community was the City of Lawrence. So I was pretty impressed with, with our crews for taking the initiative to represent Lawrence well that day. Training, one of the things that we've done this, this past offseason, the entire management team, including myself, spent a day in Kansas City through the American Public Works Association, getting certified in winter maintenance. So we all have those certifications. We learned a lot that day. A lot of our management team has a lot of experience, but I don't think anybody left that day without feeling like we learned something that will help us down the road. Safety training, we emphasize safety training for our operators. You know, if, if they hurt themselves or they disable their equipment, they're not a lot of good to us. Plus, we don't, we value our employees, so we wanna make sure that that's the priority every time they go out, is that they're focusing on their safety and the public's safety. CDL training, all these different various things that go into the training that make these guys very valuable to the community. Talk really briefly about our website. It's a very nice map, shows the areas and the routes there. This is the one that I really wanted to show. This is a, a nice partnering with the different departments in the, in the city. One of the things, all these cameras here are part of our ITS system, and we use those year-round for managing traffic and intersections. But one of the side benefits to having that technology is if you're at home or you're at work and you wanna see what a specific area of town looks like in real time, you can go to this map, click on the camera in that intersection, and it'll show you an actual picture of what the pavement looks like. So, you know, if you, it's beneficial to know if that's the best way to go to work. It's also beneficial to know if I should just stay home tonight instead of going out. We also have a GPS tracking system on all our vehicles. There's a numerous amount of information that we get from doing that. One is we know where our operators are, so we can tell if, if, when the supervisors monitor that and they can see a plow out in a certain area and it hasn't moved, that's a sign to us that there's probably a problem with that plow, or maybe the operator had to get out for some reason. So that's a good safety catch mechanism for us. It also lets us know where we are in our routes. The supervisors used to literally get in their pickup truck and drive out to see where the operators were and how much of their route had been done. We still do that, but we don't do that as much because now we can actually monitor this in real time from the office. I can monitor it, Chuck Solz can monitor. I mean, it's just a valuable tool for us to have. On the plow trucks, we know, for example, if the plow blade is up or down, the spreaders are on. A lot of times, a driver may hit the switch, and it's a mechanical piece of equipment in twenty-degree weather, and it's cold and rainy and snowy. He may think he's spreading, but the supervisor can say, hey, you're moving down the road, but your spreader's not really on. So it'll help us, you know, with those types of things as well. This is that no parking map. We don't have a lot of areas in town, but we do have some that we request no parking on. Now the fun part of the presentation, the present, the forecast. Look at a couple of different things when we're trying to figure out what it's gonna do. One of the things that I learned out of the training that I went to on the certification was that meteorologists make predictions. If you go out to the National Weather Service, they've got predictions out for the next year, two years, but what they said and what they told us at those meetings is that anything beyond seven days is a guess, because weather patterns change and it's just not predictable beyond seven days. So what I learned from that is once we get in that seven-day window of, of weather and they're predicting within that week, we're pretty sure that, you know, we need to start planning. If it's beyond that, we're kind of just wait-and-see mode. We use the Farmer's Almanac, sort of trick that my father-in-law taught me. He's an old farmer from western Kansas. And the National Weather Service. Here's what the National Weather Service is saying in terms of temperature over the next three months. And you can see, this is pretty typical prediction for Kansas and the Midwest. It's EC is an equal chance for either or. It doesn't really tell you a lot, but if you look where the, if you look right below that in the areas around Oklahoma and Texas, they're talking about above-average temperatures. And so as that Arctic jet stream comes down from Canada, you know, kinda, you see those on the weather maps, they swoop down and come up. Depending on how far down that pushes or how far that gets pulled up to the Canadian border will depend on how far that average line there around the Oklahoma border will This is the Weather Service precipitation forecast for the next three months, and basically they're saying we're, we're gonna have probably an average amount of precipitation. Then if you look at the, the Farmer's Almanac to go along with that, they're basically saying the same thing, cold with normal snowfall. It's always tricky here because you can see where the split is, it's right on the Kansas-Oklahoma border. And so we're, I, I think, based on these models that we've looked at, I think from talking to our weather partner and from, and from some other people that have a lot of weather experience, I, I think basically what we're gonna have this year is a lot of little storms with a little bit of precipitation, maybe one or two big events, but I think we're, we're planning anyway for pretty much a typical snow year here, which if you remember from my first slide, there was about twenty inches of snow. Hopefully, we get less. Hopefully, we don't get more. So basically, I enjoy getting up here in November each year and letting you all know that we're ready. I feel confident that our operational crews are ready. We've, you all have given us the tools to handle whatever we need to do, and we're ready. We're in good hands with Mike. He's, he's been here only a few months, but he's already made significant progress and insight for us and the things that he brought from outside and some of the changes that we've incorporated into our program. So I'm excited, not really excited, I shouldn't say about snow, but it is a challenge. Our crews always enjoy the December snows, and then around January fifteenth, they hope that they're, they're done, they're tired of messing with it. So that's the presentation on snow. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Mark, thank, thank you for your presentation. Are there questions, Mark?
Yes.
Nope.
Will it be a white Christmas?
Um...
Or do you have to wait seven days?
You have an equal chance.
Darn, I miss that presentation.
Really, I think from looking at the models, most of the snow is gonna be later in the year, or earlier in next year. As long as it doesn't happen Thanksgiving or Christmas, we're in good shape.
How was your prediction last year?
It was spot-on.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Well, I just pulled it up because I was curious. Milder than normal with average precipitation.
Yep, that's right. I think that's what we got, isn't it? Wait a minute, let me back up. Isn't that what we got? Where's the, where's our last year's numbers? We had eight events and twenty-nine inches?
So nine above normal.
So and, and twenty, twenty-two of those were in two, were two and a half events.
Right.
Yeah.
Fifty percent off, that's not bad.
Hey, I'll take fifty percent.
I was very pleased when I looked at the, the in-focus, and there was a very nice presentation. I think the city does a really good job with that, particularly with, I remember last year, I think it was in February, when we had one of the big snows following behind a, a truck that was clearing the way down Fifteenth Street. And I don't think I would've made it home even in four-wheel drive. We all have four-wheel stop, it's just that four-wheel forward that we, that helps us. And I saw a number of people who did some dangerous things in front of that truck, and I, I just wanna reiterate that, that safety is, is so important. And, and also the fact that the parking, I think that was very nicely said on the video, and I would encourage all the people in the city to, to look at that because it was very well-done and very informative, and I congratulate you on that.
Thank you. Mark, just one question. In the discussions of, in your presentation, is there consideration given to steep streets that we have in town, in residential areas? And what consider, I know we do residential kind of last, but some of these streets, I mean, there, there's some steep inclines and stuff. Is there any consideration given to those and moving those up in the process? Because that's one of the places that we get calls about from time to time.
Sure. The answer to your question is yes. The, the areas in town that have been identified to have steep slopes are actually in our priority one and two considerations. They're always a challenge in residential areas because of the narrowness of the street. And even if we've treated and plowed residential streets for any number of reasons, still remain a little slick until we actually get past the snow event. So our goal is to get into those areas right away. We do heavily pre-treat those areas when we can. We actually have a map that identifies all of our streets by percentage of grade, and so we know which streets that need, are, you know, need and intersections that need. Basically, they start in the intersection and work their way back. Commissioner Reardon said, you know, you need to be able to stop in the intersection, and that's the most important piece.
Okay. David, you have a question?
Commissioner, I just was gonna quickly add. We know that this is a major community priority. This is a very important municipal service, probably one of the more important municipal services that we provide. We put a lot of resources at it. Hope you've been impressed with the fact that Mark and Mike and others are devoting a lot of attention to it. It doesn't, we, we hope it doesn't happen a lot, and we, we know we don't control that, but we, we do pay a lot of attention to it. My, my observation of being in this building for a few years is just that it brings out the best and the worst in human nature. I think it brings out the best in city service, though. I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish and improve. We understand some people are impatient, that they want their street plowed first, but we do have a set of priorities. That's probably the main thing to communicate when you get questions from, from citizens is we do try and pay attention to priorities. If they do have a street that they don't think is getting the appropriate attention, let us know that. We'll make sure that it's on the list. That doesn't mean that it will get bumped to the top, but it'll, we'll make sure that we haven't stepped over it.
Jeremy?
Can I, can I ask you guys a question? Because I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking about this. There are some call services that other communities utilize and that... There are some call services that other communities utilize and that, you know, like, I get a call when my power goes out, right? West Star calls me. And so is that even remotely a possibility where people would get a call with, you know, like, your street is on priority, you know, 17, and we'll be, we expect it to be plowed by, you know, tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock or whatever?
What we have done is take electronic media and then, you know, looking at LJWorld.com and other things to let people know what we're doing and we're activating certain things. We've looked at what the reverse 911-type systems and things like that to be involved in. We haven't really seen that application here. We've thought about pursuing it for real more dire emergencies, but what we're trying to do is educate the public that if they want to know, supposed to maybe having their life interrupted, but if they want to know, we've got any number of means where we are trying to communicate, you know, on our website, through releases. Look to LJWorld.com, other things where there's information about what we're doing in that regard. The camera work and the GPS work and things like that, we've made some progress. I think that we've got a lot of the issues worked out so that people can access that information as well. Commissioner, that's how we've tried to communicate with the public in that regard as opposed to trying to have people sign up for a call system or something like that. We've got a more general means that we think, we think helps. Getting the right resources out there, being available to answer questions, and then the common sense that we're trying to remind people of about when they need to get out.
Dave, could I also add? One of the things that I failed to mention when I showed this slide is, as part of the GPS system we have, these road systems here change colors as the plows go past them. So it's interactive in the fact that if the public were to be able to go to, you know, have access and go to the website, they could actually see which streets have been plowed and which streets have been treated. One of the things that we started also three years ago is a major events. We have a 24-hour call center down at the street shop, so there'll be, if they call, they'll get a live person that they can report any number of issues that they may have or questions that they may have about where we are and the priorities and things like that.
No, I think the map's great. I guess I'm thinking, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, a lot of the folks that we work with at Just Food, they don't, you know, they're not going to be able to, this map is great, but I think you have to have JavaScript installed, and so you got to have, I think, if I remember that right, and so you've got to have a computer. Can you pull it up in your smartphone?
I can bring it up on my iPad.
Okay, okay. So I'm just thinking, how do we, how do we help folks that either don't have access to internet or wouldn't be able to utilize some of these services to, you know, to know when that's going to happen? I mean, I'm not saying we should do it this late in the game, but I mean, I think for future...
It's a good, it's a good point. I'll have Mark and Meg and others look at that. We're also, in addition to internet, obviously, we're communicating with the local radio as well.
Sure, sure.
So these are good opportunities, but those are good suggestions to continue to look at. We want to get the word out.
Yeah.
Because if the public's informed about what we're doing, I think that gets at that patience issue. It also helps them be smarter drivers about when they can proceed. So it's a strong desire of ours.
Great work, Mark. I was giving you a hard time about the prediction last year, but...
But I had to remember. I try to forget winters.
I'm going to go out on a limb and say probably 40 inches of snow this year. I think it's going to be a bad one.
I'm planning on being back next November unless you all have...
Better write that one down, huh? It's on video. Let the minutes replay.
Well, one of the, one of the things that Mark and the entire staff has to worry about, Chuck, you know, is just planning for these big events. I mean, the last five years, we've had some really big snows that have hit, and it's taken a lot of resources to get these streets up and back in shape. And I, you know, as homeowner or merchant, you know, in downtown, I appreciate all the work that you do in making sure that, you know, we're able to get out and get our businesses up and going and as fast as we can, and I think, you know, you're all to be complimented on the amount of work that you do, because, I mean, we get back to work real quick here, and so we're really fortunate to have all the services that you provide. So anyway, appreciate it and thanks for the presentation. Thanks, Mark. Good luck.
Thanks.
That 40-inch prediction kind of works.
Yeah. Hope I'm wrong.
Is there any public comment on this item? Okay. Mark, thanks again for the presentation.
Thank you.
Again, pass along to all the folks that work in the shop and going to remove the snow this year, that we do appreciate all the work that they do. Any other questions? Entertained a motion to receive the presentation?
Moved.
Motion made in second to receive the presentation made by Commissioner Farmer, second by Commissioner Shum. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes 4-0. Next item is public comment of a general nature. Anybody here to make public comment this evening?
Jeannie P., President of the Sunset Neighborhood Association, and I want to take this opportunity after I heard Mr. Corliss announce that Iowa Street is now open. Our neighborhood was greatly impacted by that construction, and I can't tell you how pleased we were with the Public Works Department. They were so thoughtful and so considerate of the neighbors, of the churches that were involved in, especially the intersection at Iowa and Bob Billings Parkway, retail businesses and apartments. When they heard of our concerns, they had a special meeting. They directed, especially like for Metterbrook Apartments, who was very concerned about students who were moving in, moving out. They had special signs made that said, "Metterbrook Detour, this way." And Chuck even called me and said, "Hey, we're going to be going through your neighborhood." I said, "Let's try it." I mean, it was that kind of interaction between the Public Works Department and the retail and the neighbors that was just amazing, and I just want to applaud the City of Lawrence and the Public Works Department. It was a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie. Yeah, I know, what, about a year and a half ago, Bob, a little, maybe a little less than a year and a half. I know Jeannie and others have been here during the final discussions as to how that project was going to go, and I think you made a bet one night about whether or not we would get through the intersection by August 1 or end of July. I mean to tell you, it was a great, great project all the way around, and we do appreciate all the work that was done, contractor and everybody, so thanks for mentioning it.
Really appreciate Jeannie saying that. I'd also point out that it's the same season that the Public Works Director in his department initiated all of the infrastructure work out at the former Farmland Property Venture Park, worked on all of the infrastructure work out at Rockchuck Park, and then worked very closely with KDOT as KDOT launched their largest T-Works project in the state in Douglas County. So there's been a lot of work happening in the Public Works Department. We're very proud of that.
We're taking next year off.
No, no, no. No, we're just getting warmed up. Okay. Other public comment? Okay, thanks, Jeannie. Future agenda items?
Don't agree with that.
Okay. Commission items. Welcome back to you guys. I know we learned a lot.
I'd like to mention that three of the city commissioners went to Seattle, and it was very interesting to go and talk to other city commissioners, mayors, listen to what they have and kind of commiserate about ways they solve problems. We talked about tax financing and the ways that that's appropriate to be done and the ways that are not so good, and it was interesting to learn that I think we in Lawrence really do a pretty good job with that. Had a very good, interesting discussion with the Housing and Urban Development, the second in command that was, that was there giving a talk that was excellent about how to save cities, how to save the children in the cities, to make them safe. Also, Rochester did some very interesting things with a highway that was, nobody went to visit. It was blighted, and the combination of city and infrastructure put in by the city and by private citizens and their, and their businesses, they created a, really an area that thousands of people go every weekend, and they don't have a lot of money in Rochester. And they had to do this in a way that was very appropriate as far as financing, and it was very good to hear from him and gives you, it gives you some ideas on how to help the city and not spend a lot of money and get the public-private combination there. I think the thing that I was most struck by is, as I went through many of these different meetings, was that recommendations on the ways, best practices and ways to do things that I looked at and said, "We do that. That's what we do here." And I really was amazed and pleased with, with the types of ways that the previous city commission, the way the present staff at, in Lawrence approach things, and I think what we've heard tonight with the public comments about the way we do streets, the way we take care of them, the way we snowplow, all those different things, and how interested we are in getting city input and public input into it. I think all that's great, but I really was struck by the fact that many of the good practices that they recommended during this were doing that. We still have ways to go, we still have ways to improve, but I think it was a very interesting, and I appreciate the ability for the city to send me, because as a first-time city commissioner, I learned a lot. I was also, you get reenthused and learn ways to involve the public. We talked about tweeting and all kinds of different things, too, in one of the conferences and how that you can communicate with your, the citizens in your city. So I just wanted to thank the city for that opportunity and give a report for myself that I thought it was very helpful.
Next item then is calendar. Dave, do we need to adopt the 2014 city commission meeting calendar?
I think we do. We might want to wait for all five commissioners to be here. We need to get that in place. That helps us, and we also want to pick there the bill-paying meeting there on December 30th. If I've got three commissioners in town or not, we can phone in or something like that just to kind of end the year to pay a few bills. We'll plan on having any major agenda items there on December 30th. So, but we'll, I'll try and emphasize that next week. We can steal just a couple of minutes with the full commission to do both those things, but you could be looking at the calendar and see what all we've got on that.
Right off. The only thing I see wrong with calendars, we have to go to April before we get a night off.
You have two more votes, Bob, and you can change the calendar.
Then we get off again in July, so it's... It just starts adding up. Anything else we need to add to calendar?
Don't think so, sir.
Okay. There's nothing else then. I appreciate all the comments this evening. Thank you all for coming. See you next week. Entertained a motion to approve, yeah, to adjourn. Motion made in second to adjourn. Made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Rieger. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Take a breath, ladies.